I'm going to call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Great. Well, this is a new view. It's great to see you all up here on the dais again. Appreciate that. And don't feel so lonely up here. Okay, so council only changes to this agenda. Anybody have anything? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the June 14th, 2021 council meeting. Approval of the minutes of the June 16th, 2021 special council meeting. Approval of June 25th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $153,510.63. Resolution authorizing funds transfers. Resolution authorizing fiscal year '22 tobacco permit holders. Acceptance of the beautification commission minutes. Acceptance of the library board minutes. Acceptance of the personnel committee minutes. Resolution for classification of personnel in the water department. Resolution of fiscal year '22 salaries for city employees. Approval of liquor license for everybody's Whole Foods. Cafe Paradiso, Inc., Hideaway Pub, proof 102. And approval of total claims in the amount of $363,105.12. And we have no claims more than $75,000.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved by Gandy, a second by Flornoy. Any other questions or discussion?
I have a question. Do we know who wrote the beautification commission minutes?
They're sent to me by Paul Armstrong.
Paul Armstrong.
I'm not sure if she wrote them or not.
I just note they weren't... They were not signed, so I was curious. Yeah.
Maybe we could remind them that somebody should sign off on them. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Good question. Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes, but I'll need to abstain from the June 16th special council meeting.
Okay. Pam?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Under public forum and appearances, we have Lori Knoll here today from the school district? Oh, and Christie. And they're going to talk about the school bond issue in, hopefully in September.
Yes, well, first, thank you for letting us come and speak to you about this. Currently, we are in the phase that we are getting the word out that the Fairfield Community School District is gathering signatures to initiate the right to vote, using Melanie's words, on a new middle school concept. And right now, it's very much in just the phase where we're gathering the questions from public input. We want to seek community advice on different items of what they're looking at so that we can then take that back to the architects. So part of the reason why we are here tonight is just to get the word out that we are trying to gather signatures so that we can hopefully get our information on a ballot so that we can bring that to a vote. And this just didn't happen overnight. This was something that we started back in April of 2020. And we had architects go through the buildings and look at what was good construction. We did surveys with our teachers. We had focus groups with community members. And then through all of that came the idea that the middle school was the one that we needed to look at more closely. The middle school land has plenty on it that we could grow in that area. We also found out through a lot of the conversations that we could reuse our geothermal field that we have at the middle school, which is a win for the community so that we can reuse that land. And the, one of the things that I think is just, the neatest part about this is that we would not even be able to have a conversation with you if we had not paid off the bond 11 years early and saved taxpayers $1.55 million in the interest from the high school bond that you approved. So we are so thrilled that we actually can have this conversation. And with that, so now that we have everything paid down, we're looking at the future and the future of our kids. And it's not just for our children, but our children's children. And this is a plan that through our focus groups, we found out that they didn't want to have a major capital project in just one setting, but they wanted it over time. So we're looking at a 20- to 40-year plan. So, and I know Christie had helped me at the fair. We were there gathering signatures and really, we were just looking for those questions and getting signatures right now. Do you have anything that you want to?
Certainly, we'd appreciate your support for this. I think having great schools is a foundation for a great community. And if we have, can have a new school, then it just shows people who want to move here that we're putting, we're investing in our future and our students.
Right, thank you.
Any questions, council?
How close are you to getting the signatures you need?
About half, but then I also know that we need to look through every one of those and make sure that, that they're legible and they're living in our community school district resident.
When do you need them?
I, oh, thank you for that question! That's a good one. We need them by, we'd like them by July 15th so that we could then present them to the board on the 19th of July. So it's a very quick turnaround that we are looking to gather approximately 700 signatures. And the signature doesn't mean that you're actually for or against, it's just that being able to have that conversation and that start our next phase.
Thank you.
And I'll just mention that before council tonight, that Lori and I did about a 20-minute video that's going to be on a local station where Lori gives a lot of the detail. And so people can learn about it.
Yes.
I think it'll be a good information piece.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Lori. Next is Teri Baker from, and she's going to give the Fairfield, Visit Fairfield Budget and Strategic Plan from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Because we're all waiting, bated breath. Thank you. I didn't print my thing, sorry.
But that's all.
We can share.
Share. Thank you.
Thank you. You get to go back.
So, good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to come and show you our strategic plan and our budget. Your strategic plan that you have in front of you is something that we've been working on for about six months. And really heavily for two months in April and May, approving this at our June meeting. So you'll see in there some of our things that we're interested in doing over time, over the next year. We consider this a rather fluid document. As we all know from previous years, especially the last one, that being nimble and flexible is a really great value. And so we're looking at this, this is where we see ourselves going. It's very possible we may have to shift and change some things around in order to accomplish what we want. But we're basically looking at a couple different pillars for our plan. Obviously, the marketing element, which is super important. That is kind of, we figure that, that is one of our major priorities, is to keep the name of Fairfield out there and to reach out for visitors to come to the area. We also have a destination development, which is where we're going to start looking at what can we do within the community to make the community more attractive to visitors? And this can be different things, like, like different events or different things like that. And programming also comes under that particular, particular priority. On the stewardship, obviously, we want to ensure that there's a tourism economy in Fairfield. We know that losing that tourism economy can really hurt our small businesses, especially our restaurants and our shops. And so we want to make sure that we're continuing to maintain that growth there. And then, of course, governance, playing that role not only locally but in a regional effect where we're going to start working a lot with areas, other CBBs throughout the area, to create some, some trips and itineraries and different things so that people, if they don't choose us as their main destination, we're at least a tag along. So we have those as well. Any questions about this? I'll leave this with you so you can do some late-night reading. Any questions on the strategic plan?
So the idea is just to modify this year to year, rewrite it?
Well, yeah, we'll see how things go. Obviously, the general priorities, I think, will kind of stay constant. The different goals under there could change and need to be flexible, depending on what's going on.
So, Teri, when we review this, what would you want the council to take away from reviewing these materials?
Basically, kind of know what we're doing. Kind of what our priorities are and how that fits into the city's priorities as well, make sure that we're in alignment. And if you see something that you feel like isn't in alignment, we certainly would like to know about that and maybe we can, can adjust in a way that, that keeps the city's interests at heart as well. And you'll also see I gave you a little sheet here of our budget allocations. I tried to make this like super easy to read and, and get all the salient points across for you. We are, we are feeling like this is going to be a bang-up year with our budget. So obviously, everything is still flexible. We may have to cut and move things around as things move forward. But this gives you an idea of kind of how we're kind of dividing up those funds that come into our organization and how we're using that to create that visitor interest through the storytelling.
Now, when you say bang-up year, is that a good thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We're hoping it's a good year. Better than last year.
Okay, but better than last year, what makes it likely to be, or you think it's going to be a bang-up year?
Oh, because more people will be traveling. We'll definitely have people out traveling. We're already seeing that uptick, which is, which is really exciting to see. You'll see a large portion of our budget is really allocated towards the interactive media. This is in general, this is kind of like digital media, advertising, marketing, it's all, it kind of is a catch-all for lots of different things in there. So video production, there's lots of things that are under that category. Anything I can clarify or answer a question for you?
First, just tell everybody here that this is the hotel motel tax money.
Yes.
Comes through the city, through the...
Yes.
...autocorrel exit, comes through our budget, we send it to the convention center.
The Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yes, CBB.
And we in turn, turn that around and, and hopefully stimulate more traffic into town.
I really appreciate that you have destination development in here, including the wayfinding and place-making. Because when people come up with these projects, I don't know, like Tables on Central Park, for example, that becomes a draw. It becomes a reason for people to be in our downtown. So when you build it, they will come. That actually is true.
If you build it, they won't come until you market it. But you still need to build it, yes.
If you didn't build it, there's nothing to market, so.
That's right.
It's all part of it.
And those things, those things are really like the amenities, which benefit both residents and, and the visitors, obviously.
Exactly.
And we need those amenities. But then what we want to do is translate all that into an experience. So how, how do the tables on the Central Park become part of the visitor experience? How does an event become part of a visitor experience? How does a shop or a restaurant become part of that visitor experience? And that's what we spend a lot of time sort of in the, the back room, kind of going, okay, how are we going to tell the story and make it intriguing enough for people to choose us over another location?
You might mention the video that you just completed.
It's not complete yet, but it will be coming out. Yes, we've been working on a series of videos, actually.
I mean, the, the one that we're voting on.
Oh, that video, yes. We are, we entered the statewide contest to win a mural in the downtown area. There is a link on our Facebook page that you can, can go and you can vote. Every day, you have to have a Facebook account to vote. The voting ends at 5:00 on the 30th. We are kind of behind. There are some towns that got out in front of us, but we can catch up. So if you go on there, so the idea with the video had to be one minute or less. And it's just left up to votes. So it's, it's, no one is judging the video, is it the best video ever? It's literally left up to who in the community is going to vote for their community. And then there is a renowned mural artist who will be creating a mural in the winning community, which murals have been shown to be a tremendous attraction for visitors. So it's one of the things that if we don't win, that might start to become part of our plan.
And are we up against Des Moines and the bigger cities?
We are up against anybody who entered. We actually, we're actually beating out Cedar Rapids right now, so. But I think Mount Pleasant's really, really got a, got kind of ahead of us, Impala. So we have our work cut out for us, but you can still vote.
Okay, Fairfield. Get on your Facebook and vote.
That's right. All right, any other questions?
And this is a situation where you can vote more than once, is that correct?
You can vote every 24 hours.
And off different computers.
If you have different email addresses. So if you have different Facebook accounts, you can, you can play the system.
It's a game.
All right.
Thanks, Teri.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, if I could, I, there are a couple of questions that I wanted to ask Superintendent Knoll and Board Chair Welch about the bond, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Just take, just a couple minutes. I just thought of this.
Okay.
Since you're here. Yep.
Sure.
Thank you. First question is, if a citizen or you assign, or somebody who's eligible to sign your petition wanted to do so, since the fair is closed, where would they, how would they go about doing it?
Thank you, that's a great question. We will have petitions at our office. They can come by there, which is 420 South 20th Street. So, 402 South 20th Street. So come to the ACT building. People have petitions with them that they could sign. You'll see people out. We'll be hopefully at the Friday, the first Friday walk. We'll be around different places and events. We are starting to meet with small groups of different people. So if there are groups that want to have, have us come and speak and talk to people and give a little bit more detail, we sure would be willing to do that into small group areas, too.
Is there a place online someone could go to find out more information?
Not yet. We're not to do that part yet, according to our, the marketing part that works with us on this part. So right now, it's just by word of mouth.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks.
And anybody can reach out, if you know a school board member, you can also reach out to them because we have the petitions as well, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we will start the resolution, action items and ordinances. The first item is consideration of open forum for public remarks. And I think John's going to speak to this first. I'm going to ask John to speak from the city's attorney. You point?
Since our last meeting, I've done some further looking, both at our printed policies and procedures for conduct of your meeting, well as the parliamentary rules, as well as the state code. You have a long history of allowing input from the public when you think there's enough interest in getting it out there for public discourse. Sometimes we do that in the form of having a committee meeting where people are asked to come and express their views and then bring it as consensus to the council. Once in a while, as we did this spring, we have a separate meeting just for purpose of discussion of particularly controversial issue. And sometimes we find that enough people turn out at a meeting that want something done about it, that we decide table and reschedule and so forth. Essentially, we have a request on the table right now to open up every meeting to the idea of a public forum because our agenda posting and so forth happens on Friday. And the content of that request essentially is, that's not enough time to get our forms filled out that we use to request to be heard at the following Monday's meeting. Essentially, there's some questions that we've answered in the past. Is it practical to try to shove the notice of our agenda back to midweek or earlier? I think that puts an undue burden on the clerk, also the department heads, also the people that input regularly for the makeup of the agenda. The media is entitled to have it 24 hours ahead of time. And that's essentially deemed by the legislature reasonable notice. And at the same time, we post it online, at the same time that we also post it in our public places. And essentially, people can find that by looking at our front case or our front window where it's taped over the weekend, if they didn't look online or they don't have access to that type of digital information. Other than that, case by case, if there is someone that wants to be heard, submits the request to be heard form. And at the beginning of any meeting, is asking us to consider whether we will open our agenda to allow them to be heard. It's within your right as the board to agree to that. But the state code doesn't require you to have any public discussion. Discuss between yourselves, that's a part of your policies and procedures for your work on the adoption of your legislation, your ordinances, your resolutions. But at the same time, we've never discouraged that. I would say our town is generally very much ahead of a bunch of other towns as far as what we do with open records, what we do with open meetings. And our committees tend to have their agendas and their meetings opened up to the media and to the public also. So that's my two cents worth on this. I don't think you need to change the format you're using because I think you've been fair in applying it when you've been requested to consider that in the past. Other than that, if you've got questions, I'll, I'll listen. And I know there's probably a person or two here tonight that wants to talk about this besides me.
I'd just like to note that within our policy, rules of procedure, there is opportunity there for someone to make a public comment. It says, "Any person who is designed to address the council shall first secure permission from the presiding officer. Remarks should be limited to the matter being considered." So I think there is opportunity. I mean, certainly this last year, when nobody was here, we haven't, you know, we haven't had comment. Or very little, I should say, so.
One of the things...
Can I get a quick, quick question?
Yeah.
What's, what's the mechanism for their, for their asking permission to speak?
They submit a request form usually by the end of the week.
No, I'm not talking about being put on the agenda. I'm asking about being allowed to speak to an agenda item. It's different.
Well... Well, if they say something to the presiding officer, the presiding officer can always bring it.
Do they just jump up and ask to speak to something? That's what's been happening in the past, people just stand up and start speaking.
They raise their hand and they say, "Can I speak?", typically.
And then if they get recognized by the chair, they can be allowed to speak, is that the...
Well, we want to, we want to maintain a parliamentary decorum. We want to have the discussion among you as far as presenting what it is that you want to vote on. Then when you get through with your discussion, at that point, I would say if there's some other input and someone asks to be heard, the presiding officer first. If the presiding officer says, "I don't think we're going to take any discussion," at this point, you can still override the presiding officer with a majority. But as far as your personal feelings about whether someone should be allowed to speak or not, you can always make that motion, any one of you, that you think that should be added to your discussion that you discussed among yourselves, to the point where there appear to be two sides to the issue.
So if, so I created this form over the weekend and sent it out to all of you. So if someone were to fill this form out and allow it to have, be in the mayor's hands or before the meeting, they could do the exact same thing that you just suggested, other than...
Can I look them in a dove?
Sure.
If it didn't get to me.
Well, I went to your office. But other than someone raising their hand and being recognized, she would already have that information and could decide to recognize or not recognize a person and give an explanation at the time. I don't see the difference between that and someone raising their hand, except that this is a little bit more having a piece of paper and a specific agenda item that you know ahead of time they want to speak to would be more civil.
I don't have the problem with your form, but I don't know what the reaction of the council.
You know, from, I'm just going to say my opinion. I've always felt there's plenty of opportunity for people to speak. And when something comes on the agenda and you want to make comment on it, that, to be calling your representative and the at-large council members, so that, you know, that gives you opportunity to comment for your citizen because that's, that's your role.
Right.
So, and I think that's worked pretty well for a long time. And I did talk to, just before, I was talking to Lori Knoll, because I was talking about how they do it at the school board meetings. And it's interesting, their request to speak to the board has two different options on it. One is about agenda item, and then one, you can check the box for just any other particular thing that you want to bring before council. So, and I think if we go, if we go this route, I would like to have more information at the top, that some of the things they can't talk about, or you can't complain about employees, city employees, or city council members, or I would like to see a little bit more decorum on there, that what's allowed and not allowed.
We already have the, if you're not talking about an agenda item, you can come to council and talk about a school bond issue, providing we've got enough notice to put it on the agenda. So I, I don't think we're really, or I hope we're not looking at allowing somebody to just come prior to the council meeting and saying, "I want to talk about this." So I, I hope that if you want to do that, you want to say, you can talk regarding the agenda item.
Just to be clear, if you read right here, it says, "Request to address an agenda item."
Yeah.
Not to be put on the agenda, not to create a new agenda item. A request to address an existing agenda item. That's all it says.
Okay. Again, I'm just making, this is the way school board does it. I just want to point out that, the little difference.
Right. Well, we can bring, I can bring up anything I want to put on the agenda as a discussion item.
Yep, I agree.
So that, you know, that's what they're doing there with the school board form. They're only allowing a member of the public to bring up an issue, for example, whatever it might be.
The chair always has the ability to restrict your form. If you're going to have five people want to be heard on the same thing, five minutes to each of them, you're going to start having very long council meetings. We've had some times when we've had 20 or 30 people that wanted to talk on the same subject. It's rare, but if that happens, the chairman needs to control the extent to which you talk about the same thing over and over again. And as far as, you're the policymakers, but you can listen to as many inputs of some duration as you decide to allow.
And that just addresses meeting management. So, you know, when I was on the school board president, we were closing a Lockery School. Obviously, we had a room full of people who wanted to speak to that matter, but we just didn't let people repeat what other people were saying. You know, so you wouldn't, normally you wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
Other thoughts, council?
I'm going to like the motion to, that we adopt this form.
I don't think we're done with comments, Doug.
Oh, well, actually, you should make the motion before you make comments about it so that we know what we're talking about, in terms of what the motion is, so.
So is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Questions and comments?
I think if we're going to adopt or have a form, the language ought to be clear to the citizen or the person requesting to speak. And right now, I think the impression is maybe that the citizen will be allowed to speak. That's not necessarily always the case. So I think the language, if we're going to have a form like this, it might, it might say, "You, you may be allowed to speak up to five minutes or three minutes for your comments, subject to the presiding officer." to the presiding officer's duty to enforce the council's rules and appropriate procedures." I think that's accurate, and it also gives the citizen notice that just because you, if you fill out a form, it doesn't mean you're going to speak. You may, but it depends upon the discretion of the chair, and discretion of the chair, of course, be used reasonably to maintain order in the, to maintain order in the council. So that language, I think, makes sense to be, if we're going to have a request like this that we're going to use, it makes sense to make sure the citizens or the person requesting to speak is clear on what the limitations of the request might be.
I agree.
What was your sentence?
It would be, "You may be allowed to speak," and I would say, "You may be allowed up to three minutes..."
The word "may" there when I first heard it.
"...for your comments, subject to the presiding officer's duty to enforce the council's rules and appropriate procedures."
Well, why don't we just say, "Subject to the discretion of the presiding chair?"
Well, I think the reason I would not suggest that is because I want to make sure the citizen is clear, that it's not discretion that's...
Not an opinion.
Yes, exactly. It's not discretion that is unreasonably used. There's a reason why the chair has discretion. Why? She's, or they, or he, or the person is supposed to be enforcing the council's rules and procedures. That's why they have discretion.
Right.
So I think that ought to be clear in the document, because different citizens come with different understandings of the city council procedure.
I agree.
The other thing I would suggest is, I'm not sure, quite frankly, I'm not sure we even need this. I mean, I think we already have in place a system that allows citizens to, or people who want to speak to speak. They can request it the evening of the meeting to the presiding officer, and the presiding officer can decide, using that officer's discretion for these same reasons, to enforce procedures and rules, whether or not that person or that group would be allowed to speak. So I think we already have in place the structure to allow this. This document, I don't know that it solves a problem or addresses a problem, because I don't see that we have it.
Well, if we had that kind of communication on the agenda when it was published, we published that along with the agenda. Members of the public are free to come to the council meeting and request to be allowed to speak to an agenda item. Then we would communicate that to the public and be more welcoming.
So if we had, I mean, you mean something like on the agenda item itself, or on the agenda it says that, something to that effect?
On the agenda, yeah. Or in the paper when it gets published.
With the language that it's, of course, subject to, the same language I'm suggesting here, that way you don't have to have a form come to the presiding officer each evening or each council meeting. I mean...
Yeah, the advantage of the form is that the chair's not surprised by who shows up. They have this at 5:00 on Monday afternoon, the mayor comes in, prepares for the meeting, has a stack, if there's even one. Likely as not, there won't be any. Then she or he will be prepared for the meeting. That's all.
4:30. City Hall closes at 4:30. But yeah, I agree. It formalizes, I've chaired a lot of nonprofit boards, and preparation helps you do a better job of what you're there for. So if you know someone has a request, or several people, you work that in, rather than just on the fly. I mean, Mayor Malloy usually lets someone talk, but it always kind of knocks you off guard. You know, we're just talking and suddenly someone says, "Can I talk?" You don't want to say no, but, you know, it's, this is just a little more formal, but it doesn't require a change of rules and procedures, because as Mayor Boyer said, they already addressed that that's allowed. So I like this. It's somewhere between the request to address the council, let's do Thursday noon, and just showing up and raising your hand and asking to talk. It's a nice compromise.
Is, my question would be, is 5:00 or 4:30 sufficient time to actually give us that notice that you speak of?
I would think so.
I don't know. It's not going to be me, I mean, I think it's going to be the presiding officer typically, right? Typically, the mayor and the city administrator.
It fulfills the request from the citizen who came to our last meeting, which was, "Give me more time to see the agenda and respond to it."
Right.
Rather than make me say, "I want to talk about an agenda I haven't seen yet on Thursday noon." So, again, this isn't binding.
Right.
They can show up anyway and raise their hand and take a chance, but this option just formalizes a little bit and maybe increases the likelihood that they could speak, because they're now, the chairperson is prepared for it.
What about an earlier time? I mean, this is the question, I don't know the answer to, but I'm asking, maybe the city administrator could speak to this.
I would say, we should do a later time, so people when they go to for work can come over and fill out a form.
Prior to council meeting starting?
As a school board does, 15 minutes, I think, is the rule.
Right. So we, I understand, and that includes, that's addressing the concerns of the citizen, a potential speaker, but also, if it's true that we're trying to give notice to the presiding officer, what would be sufficient notice? Again, I don't know the answer, but perhaps, if I asked the city administrator to speak to that, what would be appropriate notice if you were to use something like this?
I would think that in order for us to at least have time to prep with the mayor, 4:30 is a minimum. But, but I think it's plenty of time, if, once the agenda is posted, come Friday, I think there's plenty of time for them to at some point in time get here at, in a timely manner to fill out that form, if that's the direction the council wants.
Could it be emailed? Is that an option?
You could do an electronic form.
I don't know why not.
Yeah. So then you have the whole day.
They have the whole weekend.
Yeah, the whole weekend, exactly, until 4:30. Probably enough.
I don't know how much preparation a chair would need, so for example, if someone wanted to speak to our consideration of contract language for police officers, what do the mayor and the city administrator have to discuss to prepare for that, if all you're doing is asking or allowing a member of the public to speak to them?
In that case, not a lot, but depending on the number of requests and just making sure everybody's up to speed on what this topic is going to be, I think that's a fair thing to be able to have a little bit of preparation time for the chair to be ready to go.
I guess I really prefer the way that we do it at the present time. I mean, I really think that, I mean, if there's someone who wants an issue brought before the council or something about it, I mean, all of us are willing to take phone calls and text messages and information that you're concerned about. And I think if we were to go to this type of procedure, it could become very involved. I mean, a lot of people might decide, "This is an opportunity to come and speak." And I think, I just think it kind of will muddy the water, where this way, if there is something that is going to be on the agenda, then you have the opportunity to still issue a request. And I guess I really feel strongly about leaving it the way it is right now.
Well, to Michael's point, then, if you were to leave it the way it is now, and someone raises their hand from the back of the room and wants to speak to an agenda item, then there's no time to prepare for that request.
I think what she's saying is, we want to encourage citizens to call their representative or their at-large to do beforehand.
Okay, to that point, I also object to that method, because we're a team, and we're supposedly working with each other together. I really don't like it when people have privileged information that the rest of us don't get until later. I really prefer that we all learn about something for the first time together. We all get the same information, not something that's been filtered by another individual who then reports to council. So if a member of the public has a concern, strong enough that they want to call a council member, I would really prefer they come here, and I would like to hear it firsthand with all of you together for the first time.
I think that...
And not something interpreted by another person giving to me secondhand.
But I think that's why we have council members.
That's why we have, that's why we're a team.
That's right. But we also, we also represent our wards, or we represent the city. So even as a team, teams can act as individuals with certain functions, like a team member can be contacted by a citizen with information that they will share later at appropriate time with the entire team. But I don't know that the team can always move as one group, because we're not all together all the time.
I think we could try harder, though.
I'm feeling where Martha's at. It is working what is presently there. I think what John brought to us this last council meeting was to, he's looking for that one extra step. And so that's, I don't, I don't want us to lose that either, that if they have something about the specific agenda items, that we would be giving them opportunity for that. Maybe what we need to do is just make our initial form more user-friendly that way, so that we would see it as one cohesive thing instead of two different steps. Is that, because that's, his initial request was to be able to speak to specific agenda things, a specific agenda item, where the other one is if you're bringing something, let's say, you need the square, or we've got a public notice, or something to that effect, and wanting to bring that to the council. But speaking about a specific agenda item is very different than one of those. And so I would just like us to firm up what we already have and make that part, they could still speak and give their three to five minutes beforehand the same way. So that way, when we're actually discussing the agenda items, we can just flow, because we have heard it then, like what you're saying, Doug, we have heard it from the person themselves, instead of a phone call going to a council member who then is passing it on.
Any additional comments?
I'm not sure how, understand, Judy, how we get to that point where the person participates.
So Judy, would you be okay with using similar language to the city of Atamwa after the consent agenda and after the public appearances before resolutions and action items? There is a moment where the public is asked if they, anyone would like to speak on an agenda item, and they have to be here present to say, "Yeah, I want to talk about that item." That's what they do every meeting. They don't have a form, they don't have anything they have to do beforehand, they show up and they're invited to talk. And at the end of the meeting, they're invited to talk about anything. So to Doug's point, we could be a little bit better about being that open. I mean, they're inviting the public to talk both about their agenda items and anything they, they want to at every single meeting they have as a council. So, you know, the argument is where this is a business meeting and we're trying to get it done quickly, but what's a few minutes of our time to hear as a group from a member of the public in their own words?
Thank you. There are no more comments. We do have a motion on the floor and a second, so I think we'll just call the question. Florinoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Andy?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Pam?
No.
Rasmussen?
No.
So I guess that's, how many do we have?
Four to two.
Four to two. So we will continue on. I guess I'll encourage people to call their representative and, and there's, you know, you can call me as well. So, anyway, John, go ahead and make your comment.
Well, when, the reason I brought this up is because I went into the office to want to speak on a subject, and that was Friday, because you don't know what's on the agenda before that. And I was told in the office, "You can't do that." So there's something about, you know, the ways the rules are set up now that I would say is dysfunctional, because the council, the purpose of the council is to serve the public. It's not the role of the public to serve the council. I mean, that's the basic idea of government in the United States.
But we have in our rules that you can be allowed to speak, John, so...
Well, you can by being recognized by the chair. I mean, that's...
Yes.
Okay, so, but I mean, one of the things that I, you know, which I thought was, you know, not appropriate, is you come in and say, "I would like to speak," and, well, no, you can't do that. You can't address council. That's what I was told in the office. And the other thing is, I mean, this is, I listened to all of the people talking about this, and it's like you're making, you know, something that is almost a non-issue, that somebody should be able to speak to council. And this is the appropriate time to do it, when council is all together. And I have left messages for you that you have not responded to, Connie. So, you know, how's the, how's the communication going? And I would say it needs improvement. And I don't think, I mean, it sounds like you're afraid that the public is somehow going to storm the council. I think that's absurd. I mean, it's on very few issues, and if a bunch of people show up, then you've handled it by just saying, "Okay, we're going to do this at the next meeting." But it's to be able, I mean, part of the, you know, U.S. Constitution is a redress of grievances. That's a constitutional right. And so what are you trying to do? Make it difficult to do that? So I think it needs to be reexamined.
Well, when you came in on Friday and asked for time to speak to an agenda item for a Monday night meeting, and you told you were not allowed to, you were being misinformed.
Yeah.
And I think you're experiencing some of the culture that exists around these kinds of institutions that I'd like to see taken down, so, or changed.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's unfortunate, but what we want, the message I think we would like to send to the committee or the public, is that when you come in and ask you want to speak to the council, we should say, "Well, certainly. We meet on Monday night. Please be here at 7:00." That's the attitude I would like to see us adopt.
And people should be connected to their council representative as well.
To John's point, I've been called more times than I can remember in the last 12 years by people who called a council member and did not get a response, and they call me and I respond. So that's not saying anything about this group, that's just, historically speaking, not all council members return phone calls or reply to emails. You know they're going to be here. So to John's point, I agree. You know, here we are, what's a few minutes of our time to hear from the public, but we've already voted no to this.
Wait, 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 we didn't have a vote no to not hear from the public.
We already voted no to this.
We voted no to this form. I think the idea, hearing from the public is still, is still, we still understand that's the case. We still allowing that.
Well, let's, the very, well, it appears that our city employees don't understand our policy. Would you agree, based on what they told John?
Based on the example you described?
Yes.
That's a problem.
Yes.
So we need to solve that problem.
So let's at least get that cleared up.
And have better communication with our employees. But I think the council understands, if someone comes to the council at an evening and they want to speak, I think the council understands, "Yeah, we want to promote and encourage that, subject to the presiding officer's duty to maintain decorum."
But it's not stated, it's not stated there. To my point earlier, it's not on the agenda. It's not clear to a member of the public that they can come and talk. So, yeah, we're not, we're not as open as all that. Just because we allow it, it's not clear that we allow it. It's not advertised that we allow it, and our city staff is telling people it's not allowed.
The message we've been sending the last couple of months is, "No, you're not going to be allowed to talk to the council." I mean, no one's sending a different message. The message that John got was, I'm sure, how many people have you told that you had that experience with?
How many people have I talked to, or how many other people?
Have you, how many people have you referred that experience you had on that Friday that you told, were told you could not speak to the council? How many people have you told that to?
Probably a couple dozen.
That's the message that's getting out to our public.
Well, okay. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, because that's my slight view of my opinion, but anyway, you know, and it, I think Paul's right. We're not, we're not saying, "Don't come speak, don't call your council member." I think it's just a matter of this form. And so...
Well, then the question would be, how are you going to do it, to have that dialogue with the public?
So there should be some sort of message sent to the, message made clear to the public that we do encourage, promote citizens to speak, or residents to speak.
Yeah. But having a form simply would just organize it, that's what, I mean, I find a little bit strange. I mean, it would seem like it would be helpful to the presiding officer to have that list, just to have, "Oh, there's somebody wanting to speak on this," or "There's three people," because it gives a little bit of foreknowledge.
And we're not saying that that still can't happen. If somebody wants to talk to me, or whoever's sitting in this chair before the meeting, or they could call the chair at, you know, on the weekend, that's okay.
The chair doesn't vote.
Yes.
So you're wanting to talk to council members that are going to make a decision, most likely.
But the presiding officer, the presiding officer makes, can decide who can speak, subject to being overridden by the council. to being overridden by the council, but that's presiding officer's decision.
Basically, that would be a denial of redress.
I don't think so.
Well, somebody comes and the officer says, no, you can't speak on that, we don't want to hear it.
Subject to the procedures and the rules of the council?
No, it's not, it's, the Bill of Rights is not subject to any other procedures.
I'm not saying the Bill of Rights is, but I'm saying that the rules of the council and the procedure are fairly clear. It's not that anyone can speak on anything. Would you agree?
Not necessarily, but, I mean, if you want to set it up that way as an organization, you know, there would be a certain, and, I mean, I can understand where the council would, you know, there's a certain decorum that needs to be maintained at a meeting, but I don't think it's that difficult to do. Has that been a problem, where the council's been getting mobbed with people? That's what I, I mean, to me, it's almost a non-problem, it's just asking for simply a mechanism to allow something to happen.
And I think you have council members who say, the way we're doing it is a non-problem. So, and that's, to me, that's what the vote was. And so let's agree to disagree on that fact right now, and let's carry on.
Just one more point I'd like to make before we close this topic. So John is a member of the public, speaking to an item that we voted on, but he didn't speak until after we voted. If you want input from the public, they should be allowed to speak before the vote, not afterward. Otherwise, what's the point?
Well, again, he could have called every single council member that weekend, so, you know, and given his point.
But that puts an undue burden on him.
How important is it to him?
I'm talking about tonight, though. Tonight, he was allowed to come up and speak after the vote.
I don't think he asked to speak.
No, I did, I raised my hand before.
Yeah, but people were commenting, so...
Right. So it becomes difficult, but we already voted on this form, so it's done, Dean.
Aaron, were you going to say something?
The girls up at the front are doing what has been instructed, or how they understood, maybe quite frankly, how myself and Rebecca understood the rules and procedures. Could we have made a mistake in this case? Probably, however, the presentation was, I want to be on the agenda, which...
No, that was not the presentation I wanted to speak.
Sir, do me a favor. At this point in time, your public comment is over, so please don't interrupt me. So...
So speak the truth then.
So, that is how we interpreted it. Now, if the council wishes us to change that interpretation, we can certainly do that, and we can present it differently, as if you wish to speak on a specific agenda item, we will, we will give the chair an opportunity to know that you want to do that and move forward. We can certainly do that. That is not an issue or a problem. But to become on the agenda, I don't have any problems with how we have the form we have right now. But again, throwing our girl, you know, just, the girls up front do a good job, and they should, they are doing what they were instructed to do.
Okay, great. Okay, so let's move on to the next thing.
Can I speak?
No, we're going to move on. Sorry, we're going to move on. Consideration of new contract language for police officer contracts. Do we have, do we have language on this?
I'm sorry.
No.
No, that is the whole point. The whole point was moving it from the personnel committee to be moving it so that we can get, asking the council's permission to now open this up for our city attorney to help us with this contract language. That's why we sent the email to all of you from the police chief, so that you could see what we were looking at specifically in the areas that we need to be addressing in our contracts going out from this point on, and also then hoping that we're going to be coming up with better solutions to be dealing with those contracts that have already, people have walked away from fulfilling.
Could we ask Dave to explain exactly what he's proposing for the change in the contract language? It's straightforward, but I think we should make it clear before we vote.
Definitely. We want you folks informed, because we had some questions too, quite frankly, and it was a hard sell for me at first, too. And it probably isn't going to be something we're upset either way. But what we're recommending right now, three city departments are tied up in when an employee leaves against their contract, in other words, they don't fulfill their contract. For a police officer, because the amount of training is four-year contract, for a dispatcher is a three-year contract. So if they leave before that time, the contract says they will reimburse, it's been very time-consuming for one City Hall employee, specifically, probably two City Hall employees specifically, trying to keep up on the payments of the employees, the former employees paying $200 a month. City Hall gets involved in keeping track of paying, the police department supervisors get involved in the civil court aspect of it, and of course, when you're talking court, I'm always calling John Morrissey, getting him involved, so that's three departments, and Tammy and Christie at the city attorney's office are always emailing me back and forth and to the City Hall. So it is time-consuming, there's a lot of steps when you're in civil court. We had a discussion a while back, how can we encourage employees leaving to pay the full amount upfront? And the only way we could come up with legally through the court system is if they pay it upfront, when they leave, they would, we would have to give them some type of discount. We landed on 25%. That isn't necessarily a line we're drawing in the sand, 25% was easy, and it's enough. So it's something we're asking you folks tonight, if somebody's willing to pay their contract upfront, we would then forgive 25% of their contract. The other half of that is the taxpayer monies we're saving by letting Tuitt, City Hall, and the city attorney's office, the police department get back to our roll jobs.
What's the total cost of the training for an officer or dispatcher?
Usually, for a city officer, it's just over 10 grand.
So we give 25%, that's $2,500.
Yes, sir.
And you're saving the time of the city attorney, city employees, keeping track of all that money.
It's actually a little bit more than that, because you add wages and stuff on top of that for that first four years, so then it ends up being closer to 20 grand for the total amount that they're required to pay back, so...
Oh, they pay back their wages, too?
Well...
During training.
During training.
The wages during training?
So, yeah, during training, they pay, they pay the wages back minus minimum wage.
So it's in order of $5,000, then?
Yes.
Okay.
It's about $25,000 for, if they leave within the first year. Our contract is prorated, so if you stay half the time, you get a 50% discount upfront, because they fulfill half the contract. Dispatchers, it's quite a bit less, instead of going 16 weeks to the academy, they go one week. But it's still, if you include wages, training, both, I think it's around 10 grand.
So this is not unusual practice. Professional offices do this on a regular basis, the hospital does it, for example, law offices, medical offices, give discounts if you pay upfront the total amount, so it's not unusual.
Correct. Yes, sir.
So Maria, your committee is just coming to council, asking us for permission to have Mr. Morrissey draft a policy for...
That's what was discussed at the personnel committee, that we want to firm up some of the verbiage in the contracts going forward, yeah?
So I move that we so direct the city attorney to do so.
Second.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other discussion or questions? Not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, next action item, consideration of award of the EV electrical charging station installation project and waiving the irregularity of the low bid.
All right. So for the installation of the electric field charging station, we did have to go to bids for that work as required by the grant. We received three bids, the first one being from Iowa Wind and Solar at $3,900, the second being from Moore Field Electric of Port Madison at $4,250, and the third Tri-City Electric of Davenport at $9,250. There was an addendum to the bid documents which extended the completion date. Iowa Wind and Solar, Simple Ray, did not acknowledge that addendum, so, and I guess I will add that they have agreed to proceed with the project despite having not acknowledged that addendum. And so we would recommend approving their bid and waiving the irregularity of their bid.
Sorry, what's the bid amount?
$3,900.
Oh, same as the first bid.
No, it is this first bid. Iowa Wind and Solar and Somebody is the same company.
Oh, you lost me there.
Well, and I didn't notice it till today that I used two different terms.
So we wait to accept the bid, so I move we accept the bid from Iowa Wind and Solar for $3,900?
And waive the irregularity.
And waive the irregularity in their bid.
Yeah. I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, next item is a resolution, consideration of restricted parking on Jackson Avenue.
This was, this came to public safety as a request from the school district to restrict parking on the north side of Jackson, between D and E, during the no parking hours that are in that same area. I believe it's 7:30 to 8:30, and 3:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, when school is in session.
And make a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 1202, this is the second reading, consideration to amend solid waste rates.
I move that we suspend, let's see...
Yep, you're right. Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules for the next two ordinances, 1202 and 1203 only.
Let's take, take one at a time.
I only have one motion here, to suspend the rules for those two ordinances coming up.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I just want to hear John Morrissey give the thumbs up, then I'll second.
He's on the council. I was looking at John, too. Is that okay?
The purpose of suspending the rules here is that we can go to the third reading and have these rates going to affect on July 1.
We normally do, I'm like...
That's the motivation for my...
You want to suspend the motion on this combined effort was fine.
Okay, I'll second. The motion is suspend the rules for both.
Make two motions to suspend the rules for each one?
He said it's fine.
No, he just said it's fine. So it's moved by Flornoy, second by Hallie, to suspend the rules on ordinance 1202 and 1203. Any other discussion? Please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, approved unanimously. Now let's go to the ordinance 1202.
Can we scroll back down to the...
They have to approve and wait, they have to approve the third reading.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. 1202, approve the final reading.
Does someone make a motion?
No.
No. I'm waiting.
I would move to pass ordinance 1202 and move it from the second to the third and final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Now let's go to ordinance 1203.
So I'd move that we accept ordinance 1203, moving it from the second to the third and final reading.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, approved unanimously. Under the mayor's report, we have a proclamation for June, so I'm going to read that. Whereas the city of Fairfield is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family, and the city of Fairfield recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that includes every person, has been created equal, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law, and whereas the city of Fairfield's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning LGBTQ+ community are a vital part of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community, and whereas the city of Fairfield is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its citizens and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity, and is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities for its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city, and whereas the Centers for Disease Control recognize that LGBTQ+ teens are at higher risk to be the victims of violence and have increased suicide rates, and is imperative that young people in the community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now therefore, I, Connie Boyer, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, Iowa, and on behalf of the Fairfield City Council, hereby proclaim and recognize June 2021 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the city of Fairfield, and urge citizens to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community, and to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty. City attorney report.
I think I'll, we're going to have a closed session.
Okay. Okay. We will move on. Committee and board reports, water and sewer utilities.
I'll report on that since Tom Twohelle's in Colorado. We had two agenda items. The first was a request by city staff to negotiate with Jeffs County Rural Water on a water line east of Walton Development, Walton Lake. It's a county property that a gentleman wants to develop, and typically rural water will run...
Three-inch?
Four-inch.
Four-inch.
Four-inch pipe. The city of Fairfield, if we were ever going to develop out there, do anything, we would need six-inch, and so we want to make a motion, want the council to make a motion, that city staff can negotiate with Jeffs County Rural Water on the cost increase of going from four to six-inch, to make that section compliant with our standards for some time in the future when it may be needed. So I'll make the motion to authorize city staff to continue to negotiate with Jeffs County Rural Water on that line, and...
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll. Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Or, sorry, Anderson? Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
I think we've got twice if...
I have a quick question, though, about that. So when we approve a plat out in the county and they have water out there, do we assume it's six inches, or do they do, is that, when we approve the plat, is it automatically included in our approval that we have appropriate-sized dimensions of pipes?
The utilities for rural subdivision and subdivisions in town are discussed at the planning and zoning level and then brought to city council. Most of the more recent subdivisions were in areas of the county that we didn't see annexation or even, you know, 20 years down the road. This one, because of our sewer capacity in the area, it is something that's a little more foreseeable than some of the other ones. So to say that it's automatically approved, I would say no, it is discussed and staff makes a conscious decision when we take it to planning and zoning whether we want to upsize that or not. Those agreements would be with a private individual, whereas this one's with Jefferson County Rural Water.
Thank you.
So now they'll bring, staff will bring a cost balance of what the city would have to pay to get to the six inch back to us after they negotiated it. That's the idea. Yeah, it'll come to the council as a contract. Yep, all right. Second item, I gotta say this with a straight face. So there's a nuisance at the B Street Water Tower, and turkey vultures have been roosting on that tower for many, many years. The running joke was they like to hang out by the senior center. Come on.
Let's not go there.
It's a pretty, that's a pretty good joke. All right, that was my joke. Anyway, we don't know why they like it, but they do, and water personnel are concerned they might eventually get into the tower and pollute the water, which would be really bad. So Steve Redinger, our water superintendent, reached out to the DNR who put him in touch with the agency that has the authority to remediate the situation, and the steps are as follows. First, they're gonna try to dissuade the birds from roosting there using lasers and fireworks. I couldn't do it, I tried to keep a straight face. Lasers and fireworks, they will eliminate a few birds with a pellet gun, and they would take those. Provide stuffed or use taxidermy to have birds up there to persuade or dissuade. To persuade the birds. So those are the steps. It costs $1,600, and we just wanted to make sure the council was okay with it. In case somebody sees fireworks being shot off.
What kind of birds are we gonna stuff and put up there?
Turkey vultures.
Would that just attract more of them?
Apparently, no. They don't wanna go somewhere where they perceive their own kind.
I thought we should put a predator up there, like a lion or something.
Maybe that's step two if this doesn't work, but. The other part of that is, is you have to actually, turkey vultures are actually protected. So you have to have a permit to do this, and it's actually through the USDA game in wildlife.
Fish and wildlife.
Fish and wildlife. And they have the permit and they're willing to do it, they have a program and they've done this before, so. They're not making this up. This is the real way it's done. For the cost and for the permit and doing all that, $1,600, we didn't think it was a, quite frankly, I thought, I thought about signing the contract myself, but because somebody's gonna be shooting off fireworks and using a laser there by the fire, by the fire or water tower, I thought you all should be aware. So. It's not really a dollar amount, because it's under the amount that they can approve. So it was just something that we'd wanna. You see the lasers, you see the fireworks, just understand.
Comes out of the water department's bill budget, right?
Correct. Tower maintenance, that's all I got.
What is the real likelihood that they're gonna get in the water tower?
I guess they also defecate and vomit on the tower on a regular basis. It does, it does create a sanitary issue.
Yeah. It's been happening for 20 years already.
Mm-hmm.
Or more.
I say people predict the weather based off those turkey vultures on that water tower.
I know, I think some people are gonna miss them when they're gone.
No. Well, and are we just gonna push them out to the other water tower? I mean, there's nowhere to roost on that one? Okay.
Well, you know they've gotten into the water if the water starts to taste foul.
Dead joke. Bad joke.
It's all good.
We need a motion, motion to approve the $1,600.
That was the cup. I like it.
I think we're approving the lasers and fireworks.
The scope of work, yes, prove the scope of work.
The scope of work.
This is not gonna get dropped by YouTube, is it?
The aforementioned scope of work.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? No bad jokes?
I was gonna say, please, no.
Please don't ask.
Please call a roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee?
Well, that was a much more boring meeting. We had one agenda item. We're discussing a permit, not a license, for mobile food units. Basically, we don't wanna add a lot of expense, but we just wanna make sure that if a mobile food unit wants to be on public property, we have some. Regulation. Regulation, just, just for public property. Private property, have at it, as long as they have their peddler license, they can go on private property, but just for public, we'll just have some recommendations of where, where, when, you know, clean up your messes, that kinda stuff. We'll bring it back. It's still a draft, but if anyone who's not on the committee would like to see what we have, let me know, I'll email it, so you just.
How's the current experiment going on downtown?
I think they only came twice.
So they're operating unregulated?
Well, we gave them permission on a certain day.
Well, right, but I mean, we don't have a form for them.
Well, again, so as long as they get their peddler's license, that means they're regulated, right? Plus they got state laws and all that. So this is just for public space, similar to the brick and mortar stores who put the sidewalk dining, you know, they pay us a fee every year and follow our rules because they're using public space. It's just like that. We're trying to keep it simple. You know? Also, you approved, when we approved the food truck on Center Square, we approved it for a month to see how it went.
Just for June.
Yeah.
I was curious how it was going.
It went, they, they were pretty successful, I think, for two weeks. They were not there last week, but we'll see if they're there this week, Wednesday. Right, Wednesday? Will be the last time. Yeah. This month. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Fire Station Task Force.
The task force met last Wednesday. The minutes that are attached to the meeting describe the different pros and cons of each of the buildings that were discussed. The main purpose of, or the main thing discussed at the meeting were the results of the asbestos testing and the structural analysis. And to really simplify it in general terms is that none of the existing buildings are a perfect fit to be reused. They each, you know, they each have issues, they're all gonna need new roofs one way or another, and I would say if I had to rank them from best to worst just on the information we have now, it would be the West DOT building, the existing building, and then the East building is kinda hands down the worst building, and there was kind of a motion made in jest by the committee, by the task force, just to tear it down, just so we don't use it. But it was just made in jest, and we're gonna talk about, the next meeting we'll discuss floor plans and see, you know, now that we know the buildings really can't be reused for the vehicle bays and the sleeping quarters, how does, do those things fit on the remaining site? So that will be the next meeting that they have, but those were the main, I guess, things I wanted to bring up to the, to the council if there are any questions. A lot of great questions by the task force members as we're, we also toured all the buildings. You could, again, see people starting to recognize, okay, yep, I see what the architect was saying as far as structural damage to an existing building and.
The best part was while we were all sitting in a room, and he said the floor we were sitting on had asbestos, and we're all like.
No one break it.
There are two kinds of asbestos, this is the bad kind.
There's good kind. Okay. There is some very high percentage asbestos in the existing fire station, but like I said, the floors, which are the tile floors, you typically expect those to have asbestos on.
So what are the next steps in timeline?
So originally, we were going to meet in a couple weeks, mid-July, to go over these floor plans. Staff has thought that maybe we need to have a little bit better understanding on the costs before we go into our next meeting. So we're looking at August, either August or maybe wait all the way till September to have the next meeting, and, and looking at those floor plans, starting to, and try and get the site selected by the end of the next meeting. And then bringing, you know, we'll have this information that's been presented to you here, as well as for a floor plan for the council to decide on September. After the floor plan or the site is selected, then we will have more details that could start to get us into the budget process. We would have, by November, we would have enough information on the cost to determine our funding sources, start to look at, USDA has a grant determining if, if, what's the word, not a bond, yeah, a referendum, if that's needed or if there's another option. So we still think we're on track to having that answer for you as we go into the budget season.
So site choice, you're expecting to be suggested to council?
August or September. Yep.
What, is the committee going to make a recommendation as what to do with the site that's not chosen?
No.
Okay, that's not part of their mandate, is it?
No.
Okay.
Did you want city staff to give you a recommendation?
Not at this point.
Okay.
There, there were some, there was, there were some discussions about different places needing office space, and, and that was listed in my notes that when we get ready to talk about that, I think that the committee members would have some input, but it's nothing that we'll be discussing more formally than what we have. What's next on?
Board of Adjustment.
The Board of Adjustments. So we've been bringing you the Board of Adjustment minutes for two reasons. When there is a variance granted, you have the right to ma, ask the Board of Adjustment to reconsider it. The other reason is even when a variance request is voted, voted down, like the council just to see what is being requested, if you start to see a lot of variance requests of the same issue, it may be a larger issue that needs to be discussed. So the particular item at Board of Adjustment was voted down, so there is no action needed by the council, it's an FYI at this point.
What's the appeal process for someone who gets voted down?
District Court.
Okay.
Great. Okay, and then lastly, project update. Sanitary, step two sanitary sewer is about done. Very little work on the pipe itself is still needed. Forest Drive is getting prepared, prepared for pavement. That street will be repaved in the next couple weeks. When the contractor's done on Forest Drive, they will move over to MIU to work on rebuilding those roads. There is lots of fine grading and cleanup and seeding that needs to be done, so we're expecting that general site cleanup will be the month of August, which will put us right in line with seeding occurring in September, which is an ideal time to do that. Morgan Street Water, man, city crews are doing a great job getting that line. It's two blocks that city crews are constructing themselves. Again, making good progress on that in preparation of that street being reconstructed next year. The 2021 bond package, which includes 23rd C and 9th, we are having a pre-construction meeting on that tomorrow, so I'll know more of the schedule on that here in a day or so. Fourth Street, we've had a pre-construction meeting on that. The contractor will be moving in mid to end July, end of July, to start on the water and sewer replacement. They're looking at about three weeks of utilities constructing with the road overlay occurring in August, at the end of August, excuse me. 30 seconds gonna be happening simultaneously. They will be starting concrete patching at the beginning of August with the paving occurring there at the end of the August. So those, the two pavings of those streets will occur within days of each other. And then Merrill and Carpenter, Merrill is paved and completed, there's still cleanup work to do. Carpenter, they poured this intersection of that today. They will be pouring the curb and gutters next week, but later this week, they'll be pouring the island at Merrill and Fourth, so it'll be good to get that intersection back up and operational, so that should be within the next week or so that that, the sidewalks are all poured there and, and people can use that again. Other than that, I, that is all I have unless there are any questions.
Melanie, I have two questions.
Yes.
On Madison over by Washington School, was that an expected or unexpected?
No.
That was unexpected? Okay.
For, what, a year, year and a half, there, that intersection has been flooding.
Okay.
And so they did a lot, they tried to do a lot of internal investigations that didn't require digging in order to figure out why they were flooding, and it ended up being collapsed and broken pipe.
Okay. And then the other question on the North Fourth paving, is that road gonna be completely shut down or is one lane always gonna be running?
So we discussed that at our pre-construction meeting. There, the DOT, because this project's being let through the DOT, we needed to do some more checking with people, but because it's asphalt, you're looking at probably a day or two of construction. You can also, it can be closed during the day and then opened back up to the adjacent property owners at night. So what we are looking at is closing it completely. And again, like property owners will still have access that night, but then we're not, we don't have to pay for pilot cars, so saving a little bit of money by closing it down. That change order has not been officially approved, but that's where we were headed based off of the discussions. It will be open one lane when the utility work is going to be happening, because that will be for a longer period of time.
And is our detour just gonna be Highway 1?
I'll have to look at the signs again. I think they're just taking it down Depot to Third.
Okay.
Since it's, since most of the truck traffic stays on Highway 1 anyway.
Okay. I just know it's a highly trafficked.
Yeah, yeah. And we will definitely, as we get closer to it, we will definitely work on talking with the media and getting information out there to everyone. All right, thank you.
Aaron, do you have anything?
No, I'll wait. We can talk in the closed session with my, I don't have anything else other than the closed session topics.
Okay, so we're ready to go into closed session.
Just the update on the feedback from the managers?
Sorry.
Department heads?
Last, last council meeting, we had talked about suspending the emergency mitigation for the COVID policy that the city had implemented for employees. We have not gotten any negative feedback from department heads with discussion regarding that, so the plan to stop that at the end of this month is still going to go forward.
Do you know what the plans are for the library?
I do not know what the plans for the library are.
Okay, because they're requiring masks 100% of the time, no exceptions, and I was just curious if they were gonna maintain that policy or, or not.
In their minutes, didn't they? Their June minutes, they said at least they're June.
Their employees are asking for it, so.
I didn't read their minutes.
Yeah, so, you know, they may change it in July here, but it was the same for June. Okay, so now I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Ham, second by Flornoy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, we're going into closed session now.